All right, result that the Board of Education returned to regular session at 6:18. You have a motion?
I'll motion.
Chris, Patty? Any questions, issues? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome. Uh, we are here with your presentations. Yes, right? So, first up, we have Jen, Parliament. School business, financial, all the good stuff.
Um, I left you guys a sheet while you guys were out in front of you for, um, I know you guys have seen this before, the five-year forecast budget. So, we're gonna go over that real quick. Um, I'm gonna go over, I did submit the tax levy limit, which we discussed at the last board meeting of the 1.91%. So, that had to be submitted on March 1st to the Controller's Office, so that was done and completed. Um, so with this budget under the forecast of 23, 24, that's what we're gonna be looking at today. Um, this is a fluid document, it does change often as numbers come in and change. So, the top portion of this sheet is our revenue sources, and then the bottom half is our expenditures. So, you can see on top, the revenue sources come from shared services and other, our pilots. That is a final number from the county as well, um, our state aid numbers, and our tax levy. So, that tax levy that you see there, that 23,506,656, is under the cap of the 1.91%. So, then we go on to our expenditure. Does anybody have any questions about those revenues? I know you guys all seen them before, they're pretty standard. Um, and then down below is our estimated expenditures for this upcoming year. Um, so the increases in salary and retirement mandates. Um, TRS is expected at a 9.76%, which is actually down from last year at, uh, a little bit. Um, and then ERS went up at, and it's at 13.1%. And so, TRS is the teacher's retirement system, and ERS is the employee's retirement system. Um, and then the salary increases are also included in that figure. Then we had some increases to programming, diversity enrollment increases, um, equipment, fuel, oil, diesel, and gas. CBS, special ed, that, those, these are all estimates because our population obviously changes weekly. So, these are all our best guesses at this time. Health insurance was an average of a 4% increase for the year. BOSI's admin increase is there. Um, BOSI CBS, CV tech. Um, not all of BOSI's numbers are in yet, they're still coming in from all of the different coasters that we use. So, that is not final, that's actually the only piece of my budget that's not finalized yet because I don't have all the final numbers in. But, um, they were coming in fast and furious today from, from BOSI's. So, I figured by the end of next week, I should have all of my BOSI's numbers and be able to finalize the BOSI's numbers as well. Um, the bus purchase, we talked about that, we're doing four buses. It is an increase of 141,000 due to the cost of buses going up significantly. Um, and then we had the enrollment, like, open enrollment for, um, health insurance and stuff that, that we put in there too, because we figured we're gonna have some people add, add into the program. So, that's it as of right now. April 1st, the Senate Assembly are supposed to have their budgets in, and then we get our final budget. We're supposed to have it by April 1st, that's what they say every year. They've been doing pretty well, so hopefully, April 1st, it will be. I am still waiting on the BOSI's numbers to finalize the BOSI's numbers. And once I have those final pieces, our budget will be pretty much complete. So, my question to you guys is, do we wanna meet again to go over the finer details of, to have a budget meeting, um, in addition to the next board meeting? And this is something we do, if you guys want it, that's wonderful, I-
This is the presentation that you usually provide?
Um, I do, I'll do the presentation at the board meeting too, but I don't know if you guys wanna go into a-
Okay.
-deeper dive. I mean, it, it's up to you guys whether you guys wanna have a budget meeting and just do budget.
Any thoughts from anybody?
I think I can maybe go over a little more detail from this presentation.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so-
So, our next board meeting is what, April 19? So, if we can do it, if I have the final budget by April 1st, that would be wonderful, then I could have everything presented to you. But my expenditures will be done, and I'm assuming that's what you guys are gonna wanna look at, um, hopefully by the end of next week at the very latest.
So, we can get that scheduled later, excuse me, we can get that scheduled at a later time? Or do you wanna put it down on the calendar-
It's up to you guys.
For between now and break?
Yeah, if, if you guys wanna schedule it now, I'm fine with that, whatever you guys wanna do.
Do you know Ed's, Ed's availability?
No. I don't know Ed's availability.
So, I would suggest maybe we do a email, see if Ed's available or not.
We'll have to kinda wait for Ed to see what his availability is, and we'll try to schedule it prior to break, before the board meetings, that make sense?
Oh, yeah, definitely before the-
Okay. So, we'll do that. Um, Jen, I just have a question real quick.
Yes.
On the forecast with the open enrollment, the health insurance. Where does that, is that figure just projected because of-
It's, it's about one family, two individual.
Okay, is, and that's typically, i- is that usually put in there each? Or is there a difference for this time?
Um, no, no difference. I, I mean, that's pretty typical, one family, two individual.
Okay.
I could probably increase that as well, because-
Yeah.
Every year you don't, you, so you don't know, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions that I can answer now? If you guys do have questions, uh, you guys can always email Chelsea and I can answer shortly.
So, we'll get that scheduled. Anything else, Jen?
Um, I think that might say it for, for me.
Okay. So, the next, uh, portion is we're having a, um, CVES, Cafeteria Management, uh, presented Eric Bell, Assistant Superintendent of Management Services at CVES, going to talk about the cafeteria management. Oh, hold on a minute.
There, we're gonna check, there we go. Testing, can you hear me? Excellent. So, I'm Eric Bell, Assistant Superintendent of Management Services at CVES. I'm joined by the Food Service Director at CVES. Um, thank you, Board of Education, for inviting us today. Um, invited by Board President Mary to make a presentation on our cafeteria program. Some of the great things that we're doing in school districts across the North Country. So, we're happy to be here to share, uh, with you today. So, let's start, this coaster started back in 2015. Julie Holbrook is the mastermind of it. Julie Holbrook was doing this in Keene, um, in a small operation, and then expanded into multiple school districts. Um, that vision then has transitioned to more North school districts. As we go along, we'll touch on some highlights of this. But we're now in eight school districts plus CBS, so nine locations, over 16 campuses, or 16 campuses and over 5,600 students are being served by this program. When we take Great Friday, we're very passionate about it, and may come out today, um, as part of our presentation, and we're thankful to be able to talk about it now. So, first off, our team, um, I think we're led by our Food Service Director, Julie Holbrook. We have school lunch managers, Assistant Food Service Director, Cook Manager, and then myself as part of this team that does service to schools in the North Country. Where are we right now? We're currently transitioning through Central School District. You might have heard it in the news. Uh, you can see the laundry list of items that go with transition. Uh, we typically take about a six-month planning time, but we've done it in less, um, because we wanna make sure that we are prepped and ready to go. So, that's where our focus is at the moment with Peru Central School District, and we're very happy about that. And it formally kicks off in April with this new program. Also, I just wanna share, we are in discussions with various school districts about transitioning to CBS programming. Um, so we are up and about talking to superintendents as well as boards, um, on this program. And lastly, see that big here over there in all capital letters, I gotta point to that, so I messed up already. Goal is for this program to be in all our component districts and spread throughout the state. Now, obviously, I'm not talking about, my goal today isn't to say that we wanna be in big towns, um, right now, or we wanna be in every school in part of the state. We believe that parts of this program are so important for students that every single student in public education should have a high-quality nutritious meal for breakfast and lunch every day, and we believe it should be free of cost, and we continue to advocate that with, at the state and federal level. So, some of the details, what does this look like for school districts in our program? You can see as, as part of our leadership program, it's not one person onsite all the time. We do it as a team approach. Yes, we have that onsite person, but they always have support. And as we go through this, you'll see pictures. All those pictures are from our program and, and in the kitchens that we are serving, and the lines. So, you can see some of the pieces there, but, but realize that this program is proven to save money on food and supply costs, including trying to eliminate single-use plastic. Um, so that can be controversial. So, realize that this program says no to straws. That is a very controversial topic that typically raises up to the board level whenever we enter into the school district. There is a significant cost on a basis that schools pay for straws, and we believe that is also poor waste, um, for the environment, and we save a significant amount of money with straws, or in similar plastic trays and so on. Our specialty, this is where, um, cooking from scratch is what we do across the board. We are against processed foods. So, we move away from just warming up food, buying food from Cisco's, Renzi's, all that pre-made food that's frozen, that, that's large-scale serving, and first I'm gonna step back for a second. Um, we don't know if you can have programs on coming in from an observation point of when we transition. So, I'm not talking about eating down in my presentation. I'm talking about all the schools that have transitioned to date. When we go in there, what we find is that they're serving all processed food. Uh, they're serving high-sugar content food, and if it has wheat in it, they classify it as healthy and okay to give the kids. That is not the model that we entertain. What we look to do is exceed the nutritional standards of New York State. We wanna truly meet what students need, not just what some federal governor or state governor says is the minimum we need to give the kids, and that's what we push for. Common food served, not seen in this program, so in the CBS program. You can see a laundry list of items that's not part of it. And I will tell you, here's controversy number two. This is a problem for some parents. It's a problem for some staff members. They believe kids should be able to have a Pop-Tart if they want a Pop-Tart. I'm here to say, we don't disagree, but allow the parent to make that choice. If a, if a three-to-seven-year-old comes into your school and has an offer of a Pop-Tart or a doughnut over something nutritious, they're gonna make one choice every single time. For us, our goal and our priority is to provide nutrition office nutritious options for breakfast and lunch. And if parents wanna give Pop-Tarts and doughnuts at home, or hot dogs, that's an easy meal for parents to give to their kids. They have the opportunity to do so. So, that's why you do not see any of that in our program. What do you see in the program? We, we take great pride in sourcing locally. Uh, so CBS leads a geographic preference bid for all schools in this cooperative service to source food at a better price from our local farms and, and distributors. And you can see some of the items that we, we buy locally. Second half of this is, we make everything homemade. Later on in this presentation, you'll see our cafeteria in Potford making homemade ranch dressing. It's cheaper, it tastes better, and the kids love it, and it's better for the kids. And when you look across the board, it's sauces, muffins, bread, pizza shells, granola, desserts. This is where we save all of our money by cooking from scratch. The other piece to it is, it's more nutritious for the kids because it doesn't have all the preservatives in it than processed foods. Is it easier to just warm somebody up? Is it easier to just distribute food that's already been pre-made? Is it easier to just open a package of gravy that's already been pre-made? Easier, yes. More nutritious, no. Cheaper, no. So, again, we focus on cooking from scratch, prioritizing healthier, cost-effective, uh, ways to cook that food and food quality, and then maximizing skills of our cooks. That's a, that's a key one. You'll see some quotes later from some of the cooks as we transition. You really work on your staff to get the maximum amount of energy. So, a lot of times when we go into schools, and, and again, I'm not talking about eating down, but when we've gone into schools, they don't have knives. We walk into a kitchen, serving hundreds and hundreds of kids every day, and they don't have a single knife in the kitchen. That's not, that's not unusual. Because they don't have to cut vegetables, they don't have to cut fruit, they don't have to cut meat, and just warm it up and serve it, and that's what happens. And that's not what happens, that is a big shift for staff in the programs that we take over because you are now taking a real pineapple, and you are dicing it up to provide fresh pineapple for your students, or you're dicing up pears to give fresh pears for your students. It's no longer buying from a can, dump it into a bin, and say, "Have that." Big one for us is limiting the amount of sugar served in meals. We walk into a cafeteria, and, and this is shocking, how often we see this, and this is one thing that makes us so passionate about it. Elementary school kids, which includes a pre-K 3 through 5, we walk into an elementary school, and a student's scheduled, they eat almost 50 grams of sugar at 9 o'clock. At 10:45, they eat 60 grams of sugar. They had 110 grams of sugar in about two and a half hours. Then they go sit in elementary classrooms and say, "Hey, listen, learn this." Holy smokes, can any of us do that? Maybe you just have 100 grams of sugar and sit here at a board meeting?
A board meeting.
Yeah. Won't be more after this presentation. So, for us, that's a trap, and by state-led regulations, that's allowed. Why not? Sure, have more. So, what we see consistently throughout this program, we start to pop back on sugar, and that makes a huge difference in student behavior. Time and time again, we see student behavior improve. When they actually have a nutritious breakfast limited in sugar, and a nutritious lunch limited in sugar, they have a much better day at school. Meet students' nutrition needs in two meals. Our goal as a program is that students come to school, they have breakfast, they have lunch, and we don't care what you give your kids for dinner. Have that. We've just met all their nutritional requirements in two meals in our program. It's freedom for parents, right? You don't have to worry about making sure they're getting their fruits and vegetables. We're giving it, and we're making sure that they have it for them every single meal. Students experience a variety meal. Uh, I enjoy going to a cafeteria. Uh, Julie exposes me to all kinds of food, like kale chips and, and a variety of different foods that we try for students. Farms will reach out to us and say, "Hey, have you ever tried this?" And they'll send us free product and say, "Let your kids try it." And we, we cook it up, we season it, and we serve it to our kids. To try, what do you think about this? What do you think about these meats prepared this way? And most kids are like, "What is that? I've never seen that before." And then you start to educate kids on the food line. Right? And so, we're fighting not only child obesity, we're also helping them be nutritious as they grow old and say, "Maybe I do like this stuff." And a lot of our homes unfortunately can't provide this, but we can as a program. All that being said, uh, I'm gonna go back so you don't start reading that slide. We were always told, coming into this program, this can never work in a larger school district. It was being done in a school district with about 500 students. And every time, we would share it with anyone that would listen to us, because we believe this should be across the state. Anyone that would listen to us says, "You can't do it in a larger school. It's great to be doing in Boca Falls, great to be doing in Keene, great to be doing in Will'sboro, great to be doing in Stream Lake. You can never do it in a larger school district." So, we had a, a school district that actually said to us, "Well, our person's retiring. Don't know what we're gonna do. I know you're not gonna save us money. I don't know if kids are even gonna like the food, but I'd rather you try this than me." So, I'll give you a shot, but realize I don't believe it. It's not gonna happen. This official sits me down and says, "We're losing X hundred thousand dollars. Don't let us lose more than that." I said, "No, you're gonna be in the black." He says, "No, I don't trust you, just don't lose more than that." So, after that meeting and after that school year, this is the results. They were losing 135,000 dollars a year, and in 2021, we flipped it around, serving high-quality nutritious food, everything I just talked about, and they made 168,000 dollars last year. Improved their financial by over 300,000 dollars. Massive. I mean, that's a massive shift financially. Not only are the kids happy, the parents happy, the kids are eating nutritious food, they also save money. Look, that was a massive shift for us, something we're very proud of. Last little note there, they only paid the cost of our service, they paid 47% of the cost of our service because of BOSI's. So, even the full cost of the service, they saved money because they had state aid flow back to them for the cost of Julie and our program. Don't believe me, trust parents. Some testimonials, I hope you can read them. I'll allow you to do that this time. Big one right there with principals. It's not just me saying it, that's a, that's a local principal that we just transitioned, saying that student behaviors are better after these healthier breakfasts and healthier lunches. See a couple more, I think I have three here. It makes a difference, the food that we're serving to our kids. It makes a difference in the classroom. They learn better with healthier food. Teachers can be better when their kids eat healthier food. Your achievement scores can be better when they eat healthier food, and that's what we push for is, we focus a lot on curriculum instruction, but how much we focus on the food that is, are going into our students' mouths as we transition in the programs. All right, you heard from parents, principals, you heard from myself, but, but really, what do you care about? What are your students saying?
Last year, we had the more excitement than the CBS. They come in, they smell, they're productive, they're coughing, a lot of energy in our kitchen. Favorite foods for sure are potatoes and potatoes from the farm. They love, love it, they smell so good, it goes good. Ranch salad, I think, a favorite.
Yeah, the lines are like, every single day, they're all out the door, going to the hall, and they never used to be like that.
Remember they're going out, kids are eating more.
Going through the lunch line, I see more of a diverse, uh, selection of food.
Salad bar is what they go to. I just get the lettuce, and only they have like roasted broccoli and like cauliflower, and some radishes and tomatoes.
Yeah, it's great that they're buying from somewhere we know and not from like across the country, so I think more people are like open to eating it.
No, I feel good, truly, it's, I feel good afterwards.
That was cornup off the extension. Uh, the full video is probably as long as Spirit did at the time, cut it down. Horrible cut job, pretty scary, let me talk there, but, in my best career. So, um, i- it's making a difference in the students' lives every single day. And you saw one thing on there that, do you ever see in cafeterias? The cauliflower? I mean, do you ever see that in cafeterias across the state? I'm not talking just locally, across the state. But that type of stuff makes a difference to kids trying something and liking it. And that is fresh from the field locally, and we're bringing it to our kitchens and our cafeterias. All right, it's not as simple as the stats. But, so we've done this numerous times. Julie and I have done this now, I think we've done three schools together, maybe four schools together we've transitioned. These are exact quotes that we get when we go through the process. It's from day one all the way through year four or five of the program in a school. This is what we hear. This is real deal, people. This is what some people are thinking right now as we're sitting here. We've always done it this way. That is the number-one biggest hurdle. We've always done it this way. And the next one is, we had a cook manager tell us at one point, sat there in a meeting with the full team and said, "I've al, I've warmed up food for 23 years. Now, you're telling me I need to cut my own vegetables and actually prepare the food." This is a cook manager. That's real life. It happens in every transition, that's similar type of comment. "This is too labor-intensive to fit within the time constraints of preparing for breakfast and lunch." Consistent across every single school that we have. It can be done. It's not easy, very, very hard, but it can be done, and it's worth it because of the backend benefits for students. What do you mean we have to use a knife? How many times have you heard a cook say that, and probably in the hundreds, that a cook has told us, "What do you mean I have to use a knife?" Few other tidbits here, uh, costly, cooking from scratch is two costs that we hear that steady all the time. It's two costs. I showed you financials of one larger organization with over 1,800 students. Turned it around by 300,000 dollars to stop serving processed food and actually cooking from scratch. The other one we often hear is, the kids love the food we are serving right now. Why change? The kids love it for nothing. They love, they love our hot dogs. Why take them away? They love our hot dogs. They love our warmed-up chicken nuggets. We get this all the time, and our, our position on that is, it's a processed food that if a parent wants to give it to the kid, let them. If we wanna fully meet their nutritional needs in school to prep them for learning, don't give them that job. Give them real food that fills them up. It's an easy conversation, in my opinion, but it's a challenge in a transition in any school. This program will never work in our school. Our school's too big, our school's too complicated. All the excuses come out of the liver. So, I wanna bring back to some positive. Students deserve nutritional meals every single day. Our students in all the states, in all the US, in all the world deserve nutritious meals every day. We require them to come to school every day. You have to come to school every day if you're a kid. We should feed them a strong, high-quality breakfast and a strong, high-quality lunch. If they're required to be here, we better be feeding them, and we better feed them well. Increase nutrition, uh, strong nutritious breakfast or really giving the, essentially nutrients of a student allows them to learn better and grow. Remember that, sorry, we have students that are hungry. This is another piece that I had to bring up earlier. Across all of our organizations, we walk in and they say, "Our students are starving, please help us." And we think the fix is simple. You saw our salad bars. They're, they're not just like a dump lettuce tray with mixed greens. It's fresh-cut veggies, fresh-cut fruit, fresh-cut lettuce. None of it's coming from a bag, and we say to them, "If you're still hungry after you eat your meal, come back for more of the salad, the fruits, the vegetables," because they are healthy for them. And I will tell you, we're not losing money. We turned the school around by 300,000 dollars. Feed the kids. Feed them nutritiously. Because you're wealthier kids, they'll come back and buy a second meal. You're non-wealthy kids can't do that. Right? So, let's make it available for all kids to have more of the nutritious quality food that's being served. So, we do that across all of our schools. Use little to no disposable items, and do not waste food. We always try to reuse it in the following day's menu or recipe and continue to reduce waste on every one of our school districts that we're in. We have a variety of proven recipes, uh, that a lot of them truly developed, but we continue to grow upon them and expand them based on interacting with students. A lot of times, we'll cook something and ask students to try it. We're not serving it, it's not on the menu, please try this, and you have your groups that'll come through and they'll try something. And we try to make something that's very nutritious, tastes very good, and smells very good, so kids will eat it into the future. That's a little trick that we do at all of our, uh, schools, or all of our cafeterias. So, with all that being said, obviously, this is something that we're, we're very proud of, we're very happy to share with you, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, from the board.
I have a couple. First one, you hit on like your waste. Much waste to be normal, like, yeah, at the end of waste. I say, do we-
I did for Julie, so she's, she's a regular good operator.
Well, we serve, um, every sauce that we make. Um, it's not like chicken nuggets, when they're heated, they can't be reheated. Our sauces can be reheated under child nutrition rules. We can reheat everything once. So, oftentimes, if we have a half a batch, it goes into, that's the first thing we serve the next time we offer that meal. So, we actually don't waste anything. The salad bar, if there's a little bit of peppers left, they get chopped up, saved for chili or for another future sauce. We, we really, at the end of the meal, um, I've often gone on into schools, starting in Keene, and they used to have to take a dolly to get the garbage out, and they no longer have to do that. The dolly is for actually compost of our, of our vegetables as we're preparing.
In the second, Jen, how many staff do we have in our cafeteria roughly?
Off the top of my head, um, between Cumberland Head and the main building? Just estimate. Probably 14, 15.
Do you feel like you have to hire more staff in each of the facilities or schools? Is that, is that-
Um, so, every organization is different. Uh, we've transitioned so many schools at this point in time, um, and we do realize that, that every organization has their own values and their own ways of they do, they do think, their own collective bargaining agreements on how many hours an individual can work and can't work, and what they can do and can't do. So, every single organization is different. We were hopeful, and one of our goals was to make a cookie cutter, okay, this is appropriate stat in each, uh, organization, and we found out that's impossible. Um, but that, that was a goal of ours, but no, we can't.
But I can explain something. Um, I, I've been doing this for 16 years. It took until I met Eric and we figured some things out. I had no idea it actually is a lot less labor in the long run for a bigger school exponentially because when you're making a sauce for, say, 200, and a sauce for 500, it's almost the same amount of labor. So, all of a sudden, the economy of scale picks in. You're skilled labor, and everybody's different on what their abilities, their speed, so we, we have to go in and analyze. It's a lot of analyzing, it's a lot of figuring out, it's what your equipment is, how efficient your equipment is, what you have, whether it fits into what we need it to fit into. Right now, we're doing- Right now, we're doing, we're writing a $40,000 equipment grant for Peru, which will give us exactly what we need. But they actually had some stuff in a bus garage, so we're going to have reconditioning put into the. We don't waste in the equipment either. We really try to go with what there is, but we, we need certain things.
The one comment I will say is a district we changed this since July 21. After we worked through the school year, they did agree to go up to pre-pandemic levels of staff because they had reduced during the pandemic. And they increased it to pre-pandemic levels and we've been operating effectively and efficiently there. We are advocating for one additional person. It's called a baker. I haven't heard that in a school yet. We are pushing for a baker. We think it is extremely valuable. We haven't gotten there yet, but we are pushing for one additional staff, staff number to the pre-pandemic levels. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah?
Julie, if you have a question, I'm going to answer. There are grants out for individuals, individuals for cafeteria. As part of this group, is it individual school or is it still eligible or is it going to? I think what you said.
Individual district.
Individual district. It's, this specific equipment grant is based on whether you're 50% or above pre-reduced, it's almost issuing. And if you've gotten it before, if you've gotten it before, it's $20,000 each grant for each campus. So if we're on one, we have two.
Eric, did you, you guys bring a monthly menu at all? Breakdown of the schools? No?
No, we did not bring a monthly menu.
So can you give us an idea of what that would look like on a day-to-day?
Yeah. Or you can share kind of what we serve day-to-day.
I have one of your menus if you want.
So our big thing is it's not flair. I mean, it's cooked from scratch food that is nutritious in meals. And our, our biggest flair is that salad bar piece and putting up like that. In the video, you would have saw that there was fresh cut pineapple up there and doing those types. So what other types of food do you see that?
Well, I mean, if you look at our menus, they are, my sister was a principal and she's like, Julie, why don't you look any different than the other schools? Because we do the nachos, we do tacos, we do pizza on Friday, we do macaroni and cheese. But cooking from scratch, we use fresh spices. We, we actually make really quality sauces that you, that are like a restaurant. So you, there is, it's a completely different animal. Even our macaroni and cheese, you know, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of skill that goes in, a lot of really good recipes and like at home, you have a really good recipe, you're going to get your kids to be saving it.
Yeah, good point, Julie, because it's really a very similar menu. But it's, it's shifting from processed food to cooking from scratch.
So basically, you offer one hot option plus your fruit and veggie bar every day? So they're not given multiple hot options?
Well, it depends on the day. We always offer usually a hot vegetarian and a meat option. We do things like a baked potato bar. So we have a baked potato, we have chili, we have a homemade cheese sauce, we have broccoli, we have cornbread, and then the full salad bar with all the toppings.
All right, so in your presentation, you allow students to go back up and get fruits or vegetables, whatever?
Yes.
Why aren't they allowed to get another hot meal?
It's, it's child nutrition rules. We are legally not allowed to. We slide, we, we know the kids that are hungry, as long as the state's not staying woke.
I'm going to discard that while it's not being recorded. So, so the state, the state regulations say that students are required to pay for that second meal. So all of you have to follow the state standards of if they get that entree, they have to pay for a second meal. You can't give it to them for free.
So it's got nothing to do with the nutrition that you started with?
No, but the fruits, vegetables, salad, that's not our entree.
I just want to, I just want to say that we, we do make our own macaroni and cheese sauce as well from scratch. It's one of our cooks' pride and joys. She's very proud of it. We do our Alfredo sauce from scratch as well. We do our chili from scratch, we do all of our soups from scratch.
And we have multiple hot options?
And we have multiple hot options every day. We also get the kids involved, they do get kids' choice.
Do we have a menu too that?
Yeah, yeah, I can pass this around. This is one of the most. Yeah, so I just, I just want you guys to be aware that some schools do make things from scratch as well.
Well, we think that's fantastic, right? That's our position, that all schools should be cooking.
I think it's a lot of great information. Obviously, moving in the right direction as far as fresh foods and healthy. I know it's a struggle in the evening to feed the kids if there's activities and this and that. You're always going for the easy things, have a quick. So thank you so much for that. Appreciate it and food for thought.
That was a good one.
Okay.
Hey, pardon me, could you guys do a announcement?
Yes.
When the presentation was on, I had a question for Eric, but you guys couldn't hear the speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Eric, my question was, and I heard it mentioned multiple times in the presentation, that these options were healthier. Do you have any quantitative data to show comparisons between like what would be the of like, say, you know, tacos or pizza or whatever versus the option that is proposed in this CDES program?
So Mr. Big, I have your question. One thing that we do look at is the nutritional asks of food being served. And we don't have any quantitative data for your question, no. But we do comparative analysis to ensure that what we are serving meets nutritional needs of kids. And if we ever consider an option, we do make sure that we do a thorough analysis of what are those nutritional values in all of what we're serving beyond what the state ranks off. Typically, you will see there's a, an app and there's formulas that say, does this meet state end requirements? And oftentimes, yes, no matter if it has 50 grams of sugar in it or not. So we actually have our own thresholds and metrics that we use as we're evaluating those.
Is there any of that information that you might be willing to share with us? So we can take a look at it?
Yeah, that's something that the board's request down. Happy to share with the administration and the board if that's what you'd like.
I mean, I, we can give you our nutritional analysis, excuse me, but one of the things our program is based on, we don't allow food dyes, we don't use high fructose corn syrup. We use actually good oils, we use butter, we use whole fat dairy products. We do, you know, we, we get the highest quality, we get all local beef. We've done it for 15 years. We don't serve anything but local beef. We do, it's simple food cooked from scratch and that is what brings nutritional value. It is not, a lot of people don't realize the additives and preservatives and the chemicals in the food dyes are what are causing a lot of the problems with emotional attention, you know, and the sugar, obviously. But that's, and one of our philosophies is the sugar is at the end of the meal. We offer, or the treat is at the end of the meal. We offer dessert on Fridays and 99.9% of our schools do not have chocolate milk. But what we do, we actually do a survey and in one school, 86% of the kids wanted a dessert on Friday instead of chocolate milk. That was their choice.
And to be clear, the current staff that we have, if this was something that we were to, to explore, the current staff that we have can be, are able to be integrated into this program, correct?
So I think the biggest part of this is serving is just that we're at the infancy of any conversation that's happening. So we don't know the staff in Beacon Town at all. So, so to make a determination or statement, yea or nay on that, I think we're, we're a long way from that because we don't know what any staff in Beacon Town is or what the plans of Beacon Town is.
Yeah, I think that's something.
Would you say the potential is there to integrate our current staff into this program?
What I will say is that when we transition to other school districts, we have used the staff that is in those school districts.
Fair enough, thank you.
No problem on that. Did employees become employees of CDES or community without employees?
So as part of our program, we take over the management of the cafeteria, ordering, order deliveries and meal planning, scheduling, all those pieces. The management side of it, all the people in the cafeteria maintain as our school, the school district employees that were with. So they have their own cooks, they have their own food service helpers, but they become part of our team. They're still employees of the district. And we do hire, in, in one of our school districts, we do have a cook manager because they want an expanded cafeteria management. So we have a stool and trainer and a cook manager as part of our team in that school.
It's very specific to the school district. So if this is further conversation that we want to have, we would reach out and kind of.
Who would you have to be if any conversation, if, you know, Holly would like to talk or Jen, I'm happy to have those conversations.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to public comment. I'm going to go ahead and read the guidelines for public comment. The Board of Education encourages public participation in school-related matters at regular meetings of the board. To allow for public participation, an open session of 10 minutes at the beginning and 10 minutes at the end will be held at regular sessions, regular meetings of the board. The meeting agenda will indicate when the open session is being held during any regular meeting of the board. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. During open sessions, presentation should be as brief as possible. Speakers may comment on any school-related matter during the open session. However, speakers presenting complaints must have first gone through the established complaint procedures. The board reserves the right to delay action for later meetings. The board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obese language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. The president shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the time to be allowed for public discussion and the appropriateness of the subject being presented. The president shall have the right to discontinue any presentation which isolates this policy. I just want to reiterate, we are precluded from speaking about personnel matters. Do we have anybody here for public session, for public comment tonight? Just one? Come on up. Just say your name.
Hi, my name's Hillary Sponable. I'm a taxpayer, French teacher and Model UN advisor here. The purpose of my public comment today is an update and thanks related to Model UN. This is coming off one of the biggest local wins for Beacon Town ever, and I'll get back to that in just a moment. So just to give a little background information on what Model UN is, it's a simulated debate where students write and debate solutions such as the Russian-Ukraine war, climate change and cybersecurity. It is one of the most comprehensive programs that our school offers to create quality contributors to society itself, which is our mission, as we know. This starts with H1 in January where we had four award winners. They, just to give you an idea, this includes thousands of delegates from over 62 countries. So some of our delegates are friends with people from Europe and around the world and they work together to come up with real solutions that could be had in some of the most serious issues. Devon and Elizabeth are here, they might make a statement and the rest of the public comment about what that's like for them because they're one, they are some of our top delegates. Funding for that comes from our budget lines and a good chunk of fundraising has to occur. So a big thank you to the school for providing a budget line for Model UN for funding social studies and for everyone that's, that's supported our fundraising. If you've ever been in the auditorium, there are H1 banners recognizing some of our award winners. And Justin Burchette is actively working on how we can get funding to update our banners with our four award winners. We host B1 every year. This year was our 20th session and this is student-led. So high school students having a conference where we had over 300 delegates this year from seven different schools. This wouldn't be possible without our students that run it and our advisors. In addition to myself, Gabby Zayo, Emily Gerard and John Chapman. This also wouldn't be possible without the help of administration supporting us basically taking over the entire building, building new grounds, tech, or setting up an independent Wi-Fi network so that all visiting schools could work with us. And the cafeteria staff are serving over 150 additional meals that day for the business students. And on to NC1, which is hosted by NCCF. It happened this past weekend. We won 15 awards, which is the most ever in my nine years of advising and I do believe in Beacon Town history, which is a third of all the awards. That's a lot. It's, it's really amazing. We really clean house and that's attended by 10 different local schools. We had not necessarily a surprise visit, but a great and welcome visit by Matt Zayo and Justin Burchette who came to see our kids at work. It was really great to have the backing of administration and for our students to see that we are supported. That funding comes through the social studies budget line. And while our kids were really great leaders in their committees, many other advisors asked us, how are you so successful? Because it's clear that we have one of the best, one of the best programs in the North Country. And that is really having our older delegates mentor our younger delegates and also providing opportunities for our students to grow. And one of the ways that the district is continuing to do that is through Dalton Model UN. That is funded through our ELO grant and this will be the second year that we will be taking advantage of that funding. So in May, we are going to the Dalton School. Just to give you an idea of what the Dalton School is like, Midtown Manhattan, $56,000 a year to go to high school. So this is one of the most elite schools. And our kids can debate with some of the best private schools from around the Northeast. I think we were definitely the only public school there and that says a lot about the support we're receiving from our district. So what can we do to continue, what can you do as a board and as a community to continue this great legacy of our program? We have won national awards, being one of the best in the nation last year at Harvard. You can continue advocating for continued and even increased funding. With that many award winners at NC1, I would love to take a larger delegation to Boston, to Harvard, Model UN in January. But the funding doesn't really allow for us to take all the kids that really could do what they are needed to do. So if you could continue advocating for continued and increased funding, that would be fantastic. And continue supporting our fundraising so that we can maintain being one of the strongest teams in the nation and especially in the North Country.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Devon Bibo, I'm the president of Student Council of Beacon Town High School. I'm also vice president of the Harvard Model United Nations team. I've been a part of Harvard Model United Nations since freshman year and I've been participating in Model United Nations since, I believe, the eighth grade year. And this is more of just a note of thank you. And I, I'd like to, I mean, thank the board and I'd like to thank the school for allowing so many students to get involved with, I mean, a large plethora of activities, but obviously specifically right now, I'm focusing on Model United Nations. I mean, I won't dwell on what it's done for me specifically, but what it does to a community as a whole. When I began Model United Nations, our program was, I believe, I mean, it was, as all clubs do, there are ebbs and flows, but it was on a smaller scale. And throughout the past three or four years, I've seen this program flourish. I mean, at what I kind of at first seemed to be a smaller club, very specific, almost niche activity. This B1, which was like the fourth B1 I've attended, but in total, I've been, I chaired B1 last year and I, as well as the vice president of the Student Council, Elizabeth Chapman, were co-secretary generals for this B1. We've seen the program become so much larger than it had originally been. And I see so many students getting involved in international politics. And it's just like, obviously, this is something that I enjoy very much myself. But seeing kids get to meet delegates from across the county in these regional conferences, but then move forward to go to Dalton where they see delegates at their finest or at high schools that you spend an arm and a leg to attend. But we still compete very, very well at these larger committees. Like, it's amazing to see students. Like, it's amazing to see students really take on a larger challenge like this. And I'd like to reiterate what my advisor, Madonna Sponable, had said. We do appreciate the support that the Board and the school donates to the Model United Nations and the program. But continued and almost increased funding would most definitely be beneficial. You see these schools that are flourishing similarly as well as we are in these larger programs, closer to Harvard Model United Nations. These are fully funded programs that have massive amounts of time and massive amounts of allocations to work forward and, and create larger and stronger programs. And I think as a, as a semi-funded program, we could exponentially increase how we perform on an international stage. So I'd like to reiterate, a massive thank you to the Board and a massive thank you to the school for allowing so many students this amazing opportunity to meet, oh my gosh, I've met so many people from across the globe. It is an amazing experience, and I'd love all students to really check this out. B1 was a massive experience for everyone to show, and this is, I think, the biggest B1 we've had. It was, it was fantastic to see all the adults there. I'll put, I'll put my rambling in on...
I feel like, I feel like I can feel how excited...
Well, thank you, everybody. I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you so much. I mean, I think we've seen you a few times talk about the UN, and it's just been, it's the next step every time. So it's awesome.
We did get invited to a conference in November at University of Virginia that we will be somehow creatively funded in any way that we can. So yeah, we're, we're really expanding.
That's great. Anybody? On to reports. Jen? You're up.
You're perdued for me, I'm sure.
Well, next is Devon. You're up. Student special.
Okay, so currently seated as my vice president of the Student Council, she will be reading the second half of the report, and we will, this will take as long as it normally does. So we'll start off with the high school, March twenty-three. The report is as follows. If you didn't hear about this enough already, Beacon Town students attended North Country Model United Nations on Thursday, March nine, and Friday, March nine. They're also proud of the hard work and dedication our team put into this year's conference. Great job to everybody and every student, as well as our dedicated staff and responsible Emily Gerard, Gabrielle Vizio, and John Chapman. So Beacon Town High School is continuing its focus on the social-emotional learning of our students. As we educate the entire student, the entire student body by having Kevin Bird and award-winning artists who talk to and perform to our students about music and self-importance of, pardon me, the importance of self-empowerment on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of this month. We'll also have Sweethearts and Heroes on campus on April fifth to present to our students on an anti-bullying presentation, as well as discussing the topics of empathy. Lastly, we will have Senior Investigator Timothy Connolly from the New York State Police Computer Crimes Unit speak on the negative impacts of social media and electronics on Monday, April seventeen. The high school band and chorus programs conducted an outstanding pop concert on Thursday, March nine. Students did a tremendous job. A special thank you to our instructors, Mr. Nusceriak and Mrs. Brenner. The high school has also implemented several measures to help bring added awareness to celebrate student attendance. We're now conducting bi-weekly drawings for students who have no unexcused absences for the, the two weeks, for the two weeks where the winners of the drawing receive prizes of movie tickets and gift certificates. We started a student center where students can come after school and have a place to interact with their peers, play games, do homework, and have snack two times a week to add to the welcoming atmosphere of the high school. We've also incentivized our students by scheduling an ice cream social at the end of third quarter for any students with no unexcused absences for the next five weeks. As someone who has participated in this, everyone loves ice cream. It's a win-win. We want to congratulate and celebrate all of our winter athletes on a tremendously successful winter sports season. Let's go Eagle! Then lastly, for the high school Beacon Town, who came out on top at NC1 this past week, students debated in a variety of committees, from sustainable agriculture to the situation on the Korean Peninsula. Our delegates won fifteen awards for their efforts. They include diplomatic commendations for Elizabeth Chapman, Alex Hall, Stephanie Oreguez, honorable mentions, pardon me, honorable mentions for Adam Burnham, Ozzy Comer, Alani Dutton, Katie Miller-Bubble. Outstanding awards for Seamus Pugh, Olivia Bergen, Edward Dengo, Christian Nelson, Katie Rivers, April Seacor, and Lindsay Shanley. And lastly, the award of Best Delegate in the United Nations Environmental Program was me. Congratulations to all the delegates. I read that in third person on the announcement. I do not give the end of it. I'll move on to middle school. This is a really short one, so you can thank her after the meeting. World War II vet John Nagia shared his story of being in the Army and experience on the front lines of Europe as a young man with our middle school students. The veteran is the great-grandfather of one of our sixth-grade students. Mr. Nagia and North Country Honor Flight Director Barry Finnegan were impressed with the interest and engagement of our middle school students. Additionally, this month's SOR Day theme is empathy. Through group activities and discussions, students will learn about empathy and reflect on how they can express and show empathy for one another. Our eighth-grade students participated in, you guessed it, NC1. They performed well and had a positive experience. We look forward to growing the middle school program. I'd like to reiterate, one of our outstanding delegate awards went to an eighth grader. That is like totally unheard of. Olivia Bergen did a great job, she was in my committee. Continuing on, Leah Rainey is the Regional CBEAS spelling champion. And now I will pass the chroma code to my wife.
I'm Elizabeth Chapman, I'm the Student Council Vice President, and I'm for a change of pace.
Is everybody here?
I can speak a little louder. All right, for the CHES report, third graders enjoyed a winter field trip to Barretown Ski Area. Students were able to take a winter hike in snowshoes, play in the snow, and mix moors with their friends. This is a, this was a great way for children to get out in their local community to enjoy nature. Students and staff had a great time on the trip. On March third, the Equal Pride Committee put together a PBIS refresher station day for students to participate in. All students visited different areas of the school, such as hallway, cafeteria, hallway areas, restrooms, bus, and listened to a refresher training on behavioral expectations for each area. The extra reinforcement of the expectations is a nice way to maintain student safety in a peaceful environment. Thank you to the committee for your hard work on this. Jared Campbell is referring to CHES. Jared will be performing for students on March twenty-eighth. He'll do two shows, one for pre-K two, and then another for grades three to five. Jared has a longstanding relationship with CHES, and the kids call him Uncle Jared. For those not familiar, Jared is a singer and songwriter who's been acknowledged by Billboard magazine as one of the top musicians in the Northeast. He sings songs about anti-bullying, trying your hardest, dealing with bad days, lifting each other up, and many more important things for children. Thank you to the CHES BTO for this opportunity. Coverlet Head Family Movie Night is making its return for the first time since COVID. CHES Movie Night, Movie Night's been a longstanding tradition at CHES. On March ninth at 5:30 PM, students and families will be watching Wild Wild Crocodile on the big screen, and will all be entered in a raffle to win a bike. There is also a raffle in which families have donated several great items to families to take a chance on. Spectacular Saturdays are happening, happening in March. Students in grades three through five have been participating in an ELO opportunity that allows them to have karate lessons with master boys and do crafts such as baking slime and stem activities. A group of students will be traveling to Deshards Maple Sugar House to learn about maple sugar and be able to enjoy a pancake breakfast. Both of these opportunities are thanks to the ELO grant and the teachers willing to put together these exciting activities. And now for BES. Our winter assessments have been completed, and the new wing groups are off and running. The intervention team at BES did a nice job in supporting the classroom teachers and the rest of the data team to look at every individual student's need. The BES fifth-grade student council has been busy. This past month, they have been auditing the talenting part. Grades have been coming in, and talenting is for prizes, this has been done twice a week. They have made posters for the upcoming school talent show and PTO bingo night, and have started posters for the big change roundup. They are currently working on making these dive blankets to donate to the renal center and the cancer center. Lastly, they created videos to show the monthly Equal Pride assemblies pretending to appropriate behavior and expectation throughout the building. Field trips are underway. Fourth-grade students had a wonderful time the first week of March as each of the class, each of the four classes attended Chinatown. Feedback from students and teachers alike has been exceedingly positive. Our pre-K classes are going to Busy Bee in North Lake Center this week. This will be our first time going to this location. We look forward to a fun new partnership with them. March first, Wyatt Hackett and Tinkus for the Summation Magic Show. Later that week, on the third, students will join the Equal Pride Assembly. This Friday, we have two exciting activities for our students. The morning will start off with the next pastry for parents' PTO event, followed by a performance, a performance during the day by Irish dancers. Thank you.
So much stuff going on, awesome. Thank you. Okay, moving on, committee reports. Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee, we met on February sixteenth, and we adopted three policies. They're listed in Section Ten of the Agenda. If you go on the website, they're, they're all attached as a file. And they are the expense reimbursement regulations, disclosure of wrongful conduct, and homework-bound instructions. We also discussed three other policies, but are holding off for a little more review for a couple people that were unable to attend. And I'm sure they'll be on the next agenda, which is, or next policy agenda, which is going to be shortly. And they were use of timeout rooms, physical restraints, and versus wellness and nutrition, and the attendance policy.
All hot topics.
Yes. And we plan on meeting shortly, correct?
Waiting for your back from everybody.
Sounds good. And we'll have an update then.
Anybody have any questions for Doug? All right, moving along, Audit Committee. So. Audit Committee met on February twenty-eighth. We discussed December two thousand twenty-two and January two thousand twenty-three financial reports. We're giving a brief overview and an update on the food service program. Breakfast and lunches served were up thirty-six point three percent for breakfast, fourteen point nine percent for lunch from the previous year. We're definitely getting back to pre-COVID numbers, which is great. The snack program has been reinstated, which resulted in a substantial amount of snacks being served through January. We discussed average daily participation levels and, again, being back at those pre-pandemic levels. Talked about equipment purchases, upgrades to the district. And, let's see. Pretty straightforward. Talked about the clubs and how that, how money is distributed through all the clubs and Model UN being one of them. And so, yeah, we just kind of got a better understanding of that, and we're scheduled to meet again on to April twenty-fifth. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Moving along. Section Six. Minutes. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. They have a motion.
I'll motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seven. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve this CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a motion? Do you have a second?
David.
David? You guys are over there, I can't hear you, you guys sit down a little bit. Any questions or discussion? Would you like, can you sit with us? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirement be and are hereby approved. I'll just, may I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Patty?
I'll second.
As far as discussion, I just want to point out, it is noted that we appoint Polly Taverias Acting Superintendent during the absence, so any issues or concerns will be brought to Polly. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Under nine, miscellaneous. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, athletic mergers, school bus use for North Country Honor Flight, CBEAS board member election, and sign letter of understanding with BTA Flag Football be and are hereby approved. They have a motion.
Motion, Rick.
Second, John.
Discussion questions? I know I'm super excited about the flag football and the cross, those are all great things happening. Anybody else? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Quietly. Okay. Section F. Whereas the Beacon Town Central School District is a local agency pursuant to New York State environmental...
I motion to move the agenda.
Thank you. The motion is highly accepted.
I'll second.
Nobody wants to hear me, we're that long. They have a motion?
Motion, Rick?
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
First, and you're second here.
Doug was first?
Yep.
Rick's second. Okay. May I have a roll call?
Padraig Bean?
Yes.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gable?
Yes.
Patty Laphlem?
Yes.
Ed Marin? Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Resolution declared adopted. Section Ten. Policies. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies. Expense reimbursement regulation, disclosure of wrongful conduct, homebound instruction, as we just heard from Doug. They have a motion, please.
I'll motion, Doug.
Do you have a second?
David.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial. Resolve that the Acting Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports and donations be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion, John.
I'll second.
Chris? May I have a roll call?
Padraig Bean?
Yes.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gable?
Yes.
Patty Laphlem?
Yes.
Ed Marin? Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
David Trudeau?
Motion passes. Additional items to discuss? Does anybody have any other additional items? I think that we're going to schedule the budget, budget meeting, and we're scheduling a policy meeting, and that should be it. Okay. Second portion of public comment, do we have anybody here for public comment? Okay, nobody wants to hear my voice again, do they? All right. So we are going to enter into executive session. Resolve that the Board of Education appoint... Myself, Nicole. As clerk for time for this meeting. They have a motion?
I'll motion.
Chris? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we are going to enter executive session and to discuss personnel, employment of person, or persons. And we are asking Jackie Kellern and Tony Brock to enter as well. They are invited to enter. Okay, so we're going to enter executive session, discuss employment history. They have a motion.
I'll motion.
They have a second?
I'll second.
She told me I had to do it again.
Oh, okay.
Questions, discussion? Motion pa, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.